...in progress.
Well, welcome to tonight's work session. Today is Monday, July the 25th, 2022. The time is 5:00 PM. The work session of the city council will now come to an end. We have four items tied to speak with, to speak about. Item one, our city projects update. Item two is a chamber of commerce update. Item three is a traffic study, priorities and discussion of welcome center relocation. Item four is a steps to becoming tourist town, marketing plan and branding. And five is just a discussion of other agenda items that council may want to bring up in the, in the future. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. Start with the city projects update. Who is first?
If I could, we get first.
Yeah, we'll let them go first. There's only one, one topic, so.
So, uh, we're just here today, both me and Michael Durbin, he'll come up in a moment, to give you an update on the housing, uh, or the Housing Now Incentive Program that we just opened applications for a week ago today, actually. And, um, just as a reminder, the city council allocated a million dollars towards this program, 500,000 towards downtown vacant projects, 500,000 towards new build projects. Incentivizing each program, uh, $25,000 per unit for the downtown vacant projects, up to a total of eight units, 200,000 per, uh, per project. And then 15,000 for new builds, up to 10 projects, 150,000 dollars for new builds. Um, I'm happy to say that we have gotten applications already. We actually got several applications the first day that it was open. Um, and at this point, we received eight applications plus the Fox Theater, which is kind of its own separate thing a little bit, but, uh, so we received nine applications. Most of them were for the downtown vacant rehab projects. And, um, if we were to approve all of those projects, uh, we, it would account for 75 new units in Trinidad. Um, originally, our goal through this program was 53. And so the fact that, just like I said, in one week's time, we've gotten applications that would go over that original amount is promising. Part of the issue we're having though at this point is that we've received more applications for the downtown vacant rehabs than we have for the new builds. And at this point, we actually have exceeded the allocated funds for the downtown rehab. So it's going to be up to council, uh, whether you all, which of those applications you choose to move forward. And then also if we decide at one point if we want to take some of the funds from the one program and put it towards the other one, or if we want to allocate more, uh, funds to this. But of those programs that we currently have accepted applications for, like I said, there's eight plus the Fox Theater. But with this investment through both of those programs, city council would be allocating 965,000 dollars towards this incentive program, which would then spur on more than 20 million dollars worth of investment in our community from the developers looking to build those projects. So we, we think that that would be a very successful program. If we put in a million dollars, ended up getting 20 million dollars invested in our community while activating our downtown buildings, adding more people into our, uh, tax rolls so that the city's collecting more taxes, et cetera. So at this time, we're, we're still accepting applications, doesn't, haven't closed yet. Though like I said, for the downtown vacant, we are allotted funds for it. So unless we reallocate or put more money into it, we won't be able to meet all of the demand that we have. I'll let Michael come up and fill in on anything I may have forgotten and also tell you what some of his plans are for next steps.
So, uh, the, we put together a pretty aggressive calendar because we've heard from the development community, a lot of them need a letter, the funding agreement to go to the bank to close out their construction loan. Actually, the two new builds are ready to go to final closing on construction financing. And that funding agreement would be the letter the bank needs to underwrite their construction loan. Uh, so this is a really aggressive timeline, but one thing that I didn't meet with Les, one thing we do need to do is to get two definitions into the code that would be reflected in the affordability mechanisms and deed restrictions. Uh, so we plan on bringing that to your meeting, your next meeting on August 2nd. We may have a third definition, but as of right now, it's a definition for long-term rental and also primary residence. Those would actually go into chapter one. Again, you know, there was a question about how would you protect or how would you, if someone violated the deed restriction? Basically, you define those two terms as a long-term rental being three or six months or more of rental and actively keeping it occupied. And also primary residence being of your occupancy as six months or more and paying taxes. There's different ways of, there are tax, uh, vehicle registration, voter registration, et cetera, to prove that you are actually a primary residence of Los Angeles County. Uh, and then if you violated that, per, if you're an occupant of one of those units, that if you'd be in violation of municipal code, uh, as a general citation. So working with Les to get those into the code so that we have some flexibility uh, behind the, the funding mechanisms that we put in place. So that first reading, the second reading will be the second, and then the 16th. We are looking to close the first round of funding on August 12th. The reason for that is not that we wouldn't want to continue to accept applications, but we are requiring site visits, uh, of both myself and Wally, as well as the building department, uh, to ensure that these projects are feasible. So that they're not posing something that wouldn't be code. Uh, and we want, again, we want to see if he's actually moving forward. Uh, the final piece of this is that, um, we are, again, working with legal counsel to create all these agreements. Uh, and what we have heard from our initial is that they want to see draft, just the forms of the legal mechanisms that are going to be reported against properties. So Les and I are trying to make sure we get that ahead of the actual hearing with the council for the funding agreement. So we're doing our best to make sure that that can see the well in advance so that there isn't any hemming and hawing when they're standing in front of you. And then a final thing is, the last thing on there is we would suggest that we schedule a special meeting the last week of August to do this. Um, I anticipate it'll be about two hours, two hours to get through the applications. We're going to try to do it systematically. Again, it's first come, first served. We've time dated every application that has come in the door so that...
That's if we don't get any more applications between now and August 12th.
But we will, I've met with each applicant, they're going to have about five to 10 minutes to do a presentation. I'll introduce it and then we'll have the council take action on each one and systematically go through them. Um, but if you, uh, looked at your calendars, if that week doesn't work, we can certainly target a different week, but that is the fifth, kind of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
You said that was the last week of August?
Yes.
So then Monday is the 29th, the 30th, I believe is, sort of calendar music play. 29th is Monday, 30th, 31st.
It's the fifth Tuesday, Mike.
Yeah, that's our fifth Tuesday, fifth week.
Sorry to have another meeting. We can maybe look at a different time, uh, if that doesn't work on the council, but it should be a fun meeting.
We have no lives.
So, so you're looking at the week of the 29th?
Yeah.
So, um, certainly just letting Wally and I know and I hope we can solve it.
Let me ask you a question. What you were talking about, they want a commitment from us for the 20th. Are, are we getting any commitment from them to do this work? I mean, do they have to really have some kind of a contract to...
Yeah, they won't get their funding to see out, till they complete the...
Because we don't want to tie up money and they're not going to do it, you know? Because talk's, talk's cheap sometimes.
Yeah, and when I, when we work, when I work with Les through the actual creation of these agreements, we can put in there like a start date, and we talked about that today.
Yeah, that would be something that...
Sixty day, around that sixty day, six months to start.
Would be helpful, because then that way we know they're going to be committed to do it.
And the idea, I guess, would be that if they don't, the funds would be de-obligated and go back to the... Not great, we'd rather see the house. Keeping it in the budget.
Sure. Other questions?
What is the application max for the downtown area?
The, well, it's not a number of applications, it's the amount of funds that we have.
Well, how much?
And we have 500,000 for that. Currently, we have received requests for...
665.
665,000 for that. So we've already exceeded that by 165,000. And that actually excludes the Fox West Theater. There's going to be two of them units in that, so they asked for funding for that as well, for those residential units. We just took it out of this because that project alone is a 25 million dollar investment, so it made it look like...
It's real and allocated.
Yeah.
Well, we just didn't want to like...
We didn't want to say like, oh man, you're putting a million dollars, you're getting 45 million dollars out of it.
Can you sound that realistic?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and click your question.
Yeah, so we have no applications for new builds.
No, we have two.
We have two.
Yes, we have two applications for new builds. Um, the thing is, both of those applications would actually exceed the maximum amounts that they could get per project. So like I said, we, for, we'll get 15,000 up to 10 units. And one of those is actually to build 24 units, and one of those is to build 12 units. So we would only subsidize the first 10 of those, and then the rest would be upon that developer to...
So, I, I'd like your opinion on something. Because we, we're over down on downtown by 165. Would it be beneficial to let, increase that by 165? Do you include those, or is it not?
Well, well, the original proposal was actually asking for a million for each of these programs. And I think we still think there could be potential, if council deans that this program is proving to be a success, to allocate that full amount in there. Because yes, 165 would be great to help us make sure all these projects happen. But like I said, we just opened this application a week ago. There might be a number of people in this community that don't even know this exists yet. That's what might come, looking for the opportunity to get that gap funding, to get a project going that wouldn't otherwise happen.
And so to Wally's credit, we did go downtown, door to door, drop off applications. So, um, we have, and I, Wally has, uh, put in the extra effort to reach out to the downtown proprietors and then we called the developers that were, that had projects that they had come into city staff about, so.
And, and yeah, I think there's some potential. There, there are certain buildings out there that I've heard people are thinking about turning into housing, and we haven't even heard anything from them yet. Like, we've dropped off this information, but they're tied up. I heard one of them has a sick father, that she's helping to deal with that, et cetera. And I still think there's a very good chance we're going to have more people coming and asking about this program and how they can apply for it.
And the way you, the way the resolution was written as well, it's actually 1.5 million. And you, the council has the liberty to say, in that 1.5, to shift funds. And then also, you could also allocate more funds. But I think that would be part of the discussion on the 29th, 30th, or 31st is, is for the council to...
That was a question I had, there's two questions here, a two-part question. One is, have you looked into, because we left that other 1.5 or 1.6 mil, million available to add to this program? And partially was to add to the program, or to maybe look into if there is, can we leverage that to get more funding? Have you, has anybody looked into that possibility?
Both for your new build projects, actually, uh, the, the one that was for sale, they had pulled the plug on it, actually, both of them, they had pulled the plug. They're, they're both leveraging state funding, uh, so they're actually going to be, um, both of those projects came back to and are now going to probably move forward because of the incentive program. Um, one actually pulled funding out of a different community to make this one happen.
No, what I was asking is that, yeah, we looked into whether we can leverage that 1.5 or a portion of it, add to the program itself. Have you looked at that?
Uh, gotcha.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, you know, we can, um, that's a great question. I will look into that. I have not.
Because, and that was the reason when we were talking about keeping just that 1.5, that was the question that I brought up, to try to leverage it if we possibly can. If we can, then we could take and allocate that, those funds to the program, add to it.
At this point, what we're seeing is that our, the developers are working, are using this money for them to leverage towards other programs.
Sure, and that makes sense.
And the state, uh, the state, then, you know, their budget cycle is July 1st. And so the, they haven't adopted, and there is actually two new bills that have passed that I think would warrant before, I think would certainly warrant additional. The state takes a little bit to figure out exactly how they're going to do it. Um, but I do think that that's still a great idea, uh, to take a hard look at that before we, before we jump completely off into this. But I, I think with the flexibility of the resolution, adopting resolution, you can take money out of the TAP fees and re, re-up the TAP fees as needed as well. So there's some flexibility in this. I think on the, I think we'll give you another update on the 16th, just to give you an idea so that, and have the ability to consider additional funding if needed on that date, uh, because we'll have closed the first round of applications as well.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. You were saying we're at 965 and 665 is for the downtown? Is that, does that mean that's 300 that would be potentially allocated to the new workforce housing?
Yes.
So those are the two projects that you're probably looking for that are not downtown?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had is, I'm, I'm a little unclear about what you were talking about in terms of enforcing the deed restrictions. Wouldn't it make more sense to enforce them against a landlord than a tenant? Because the landlord is the one who's offering the tenancy. The tenant is going to, you know...
Some of these are for sale. Not all of these are going to be for rent.
Okay.
So it'd be, yeah, we'd have to come up with mechanisms to enforce both ends.
But if, the enforcement on a rental would be against both property. And then the enforcement is, is that if the, what I saw in my previous career is I had people after a property change, and they didn't want to rent the units. And so there's, in the definition, they have to actively be renting the unit. And if they, if the rental unit remains vacant for more than three months, they're considered a violation of the covenant. So there's, so believe it or not, I actually had a gentleman in my previous community that let his ADU, it was a thousand dollars a day. He got to pay 365,000 dollars a year to keep a tenant in his ADU.
How, you know... So, an answer to, kind of not an answer, but a question to your question is that, the concern that I have is you have a building out there that has a landlord, let's say in Colorado Springs, but they've leased to someone else. And the someone else is the one that's going to be building these out, correct? How strong of language are you going to have to have within that rental agreement between the actual owner and the less seen? So that there's not any problems, that's the big...
The, the, there's a, the rental agreement's less, would be less of a mechanism. The, the real hammer you're going to have is a restricted covenant that's recorded against a deed on the property. That's your hammer. Um, and that is signed by the property owner, so they're in violation of the code, so they're the ones...
Well, I, I think that you've had such an enthusiastic response, probably tells you there's more out there and that it's something we should reconsider how much.
Are you...
Other questions?
Yeah. What about, um, developers? How many developers do we have signed on right now?
We, we have eight applications.
Okay.
Or nine, if you include the Fox West.
Oh, okay, okay. Those are the applications for the developers.
Yeah, for the developers. We've spoken to other developers that are interested in projects in town. Um, but some of them just aren't ready yet. Um, they don't have the additional funding. Because, because this is supposed to be a gap funding to help fill that gap. And there's a few of them that just doesn't fill the gap, that they still are short of the investment right they need.
I would say of the, of the, who I would classify as developers on this list? Um, I would say six are developers and two are kind of more local. But they're, I, I think the two that are local are property, I mean, the anti-delabidation ordinance, the two units we have in that, they are the poster child for hardworking locals. They don't, like, how do people get things done? So, I mean, I'm really impressed by those, that, that couple and the way they do business. And, I mean, they're, they're the true tritty daddy of the roll for sleep and put their money where their mouth is kind of folks. So those are, that's, like, I can't wait to present that project. And these other developers of, within the state, I guess? Yeah, they're, the other ones are...
One of them's in California.
Yeah.
But yes, I think all the rest are in the state.
You know, I'm kind of concerned, where, how does the Fox get into this? Because aren't these supposed to be more for residential projects?
We, we didn't include, like I said, we didn't include that project in here because the city's funding the city. I think it's, we'll present that and let the council kind of weigh in on it and address that.
And, but yes, that, that is specifically part of theirs, we pulled it out. But to that, part of their plan is to put two residential units within the Fox West Theater. They're putting in that, their annex, where the first floor is going to be a lobby. Then there's going to be one apartment on the second floor, one apartment on the third floor. And so I, it's up to you all, whether you all think it's appropriate or not, but we did receive an application.
I guess the big question is with that particular project, I mean, it's going to take multiple years before. And how soon those apartments would be ready to be built, whether we tie up that funding or not? Isn't that would be... Uh, I think Aaron Williamson, are you, uh, I think you're virtual, you have any questions?
Hi, I'm so, so sorry. I ended up with a really bad call, so I am called in and getting a link to join the meeting, but I have been listening. Mayor, at this point, um, I, I don't have any questions at this point, but thank you, uh, for calling out on.
Okay, any other questions? Well, uh, it's, now it's moving.
Yeah, I apologize, I won't figure on the second, just to, but Les is, I've talked to Les, he's ready to carry that.
Some of you just didn't know that.
I see Wally's in for a second, so I apologize.
It's good, it's good to see we have a lot of activity on this, on this particular project. Because sometimes we've had projects in the past and nobody takes us up on it. So I'm glad to see that this is moving in that, you know, positive direction.
Yes, as we said, it's, the goal was 53 units. If we pass those, it would count for 75. But the other thing is our housing needs assessment says we actually need 121.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So yeah, even though we're, we're doing well, it, it wouldn't hurt us to keep moving that direction. So, all right, thank you.
Okay, who, who's next with projects? Actually, we have still, we're still on city projects.
Oh, okay.
Bob, you have something to report on, please?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, obviously, we have a flower project, continuation of that project. And we do want to get the planner that's down here in the corner completed. They're actually working on it today. So hopefully, here in the next couple days, weeks, we'll have that completed. So I'll jump over to the library fence. Uh, that's a project for Jessica next door where she's fencing off the back portion of the library to keep a lot of, clean that up, get some of the people out of there. That's in the works right now. Robert Philpott's the contractor on that. Waterworks, building rehab. The design is completed on that project. Uh, we're just waiting for the funds on that project. That's, uh, where Gerald, Gerald, Jared will, he housed that outdoor red guy. So anyway, the design is complete and we're waiting funds.
How much funds, what, what dollar amount of funds are you waiting on?
You know, it's not, my project, I want to say is close to a mill.
I want to say it's around there.
Yeah, it's a chunk, because it's new windows, it's, uh, everything internal in that building.
Good.
Unfortunately, with the pro, cost of materials.
Have we done an estimation on what it would, to do the project entirely? Have you done any kind of an estimation of it?
As far as what the...
The entire project would cost?
Uh, I don't know. I, I think there's been an estimate done, but that would probably be more up to Jared. We, we, the reason we have, we have all the, we assign all the projects in our office. So it's not really out of our... But we'll help them if they need to go out to bid, whatever, with Jenny, project manager. Americana Road, we call it orphan tank removal. We're waiting on, um, Western Civil to get in there and backfill it. And that way PBC can continue with the extension of the storm sewer. So that was just, it's just a small project, but we're waiting for them to complete their, their portion of the backfilling. The, the tank's been removed and everything else is ready to go. LEA, that was all designed, ready to go, and got put on the back burner because, um, I guess the person owns that building. They have other plans for building a stairway, stairwell top down to the bottom of the basement. So it doesn't make sense for us to go in there and put branded...
Which building?
Uh, it would be the...
Oh, I'm here.
Thank you. Yeah, I, so it would make sense for us to put concrete in that alley and then have to remove it. So like, because that wall's probably going to be nine foot deep. It's going to be a sizable excavation. Just makes sense to put the wall, the stairwell in place before we do our improvements. So unfortunately, we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern. We do have a, they are, we requested an easement for there to block out that stairwell. So we're in the process of getting, they are in the process of getting that easement. And then we'll have a development agreement in place for them to, uh, basically, if they don't get it within a certain time limit, I guess we'll end up proceeding anyway. So that's where we're at on that. Unfortunately, that project was ready to go and it got put on the back burner.
Estimate a time to... Estimate a time to reinstate the project, here?
Uh, we're hoping sooner than that, right?
No, we only want to give them about six months to get it, yeah. We've been kind of waiting on the, the easement language for a little bit now, since, actually since Mike left. So I think we're, it's promised early this week. And then we'll get that development agreement in place and give them six months.
First Street Improvements, we are getting a lot closer. Nate took over the design on that. So we should be, he told me today that we should have, we should have plans at least to review by the end of the week, first part of next week. So both, all going well, we'll get that job out to bid, get rolling.
Okay, you've been able to find out somebody to make the bricks? That's again the question I had a long...
Internal question.
What's that?
Make the brick.
Who, who can make the bricks?
Oh, um, yeah, we're, we're salvaging on that project bricks as well, if we have to purchase them.
Do you have a supplier that will make those bricks?
Well, probably the same one that's supplying the Americana Road. They, they make a paper, a paper, a brick. So, um, we're hoping that we have enough salvage on that job. As part of, part of that grant is to reuse the bricks.
Because what, we didn't finish, what, what... Because right now what's going to happen is just the center is going to be brick and the sides will be concrete.
That's correct.
Why are, why are we not doing it the way we did commercial, which is printed red concrete? It's...
Well, commercial, if I'm not mistaken, is bricks.
It's all the bricks.
It's a brick pavement.
Isn't it?
It is.
Okay.
If it was up to me, I would love to bring the concrete to the top, either stamp it or just leave it concrete.
Yeah.
By adding the bricks, it just adds more cost and maintenance to us. But yeah, there's six inches of concrete sand and then the bricks on top.
I can attest to that.
I always thought it was just printed, yeah.
No, it's not stamped.
Huh, okay. All right, all right.
On the, on the First Street Theater? You, you had talked about extending it down to Maple and that. Yeah, on the grant money is the design part of that, are part of the Chestnut deal area there too?
Yeah, First Street is, it, it starts at Chestnut, runs to Convent. And if money, if we have the money, we'd like to go up Maple and Chestnut as well.
Yeah, that's why it was, yeah.
It just really depends how the funds come in.
Do, what kind of funds do you have? I mean, were you looking for grants on that, or is, money do we have available?
We, we have that one grant we went after, I never, we heard on that. It was, uh, it was a Dole grant, uh, for a portion of his, I want to say in the eight, 700 or 900,000 dollar. And I went with Mike up to, uh, Golden, but I never heard if we got granted that or not.
Because I mean, it's silly to make a design if we don't have the money to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why, because I thought, I thought we had money to do some of it.
We have 5.4 in capital funds set aside for that project. It, it just, it's just right now, things are so volatile, we're hoping that we can get in. You know, we hope we find somebody that wants to do the project. The next one I'm going to talk about is down the road, but we've been to the citywide striping. That was a 280-plus thousand dollar job and nobody gave us a bid. Wow. So we're hoping that we can piggyback maybe when, when the stri... So we're hoping that we can piggyback maybe when, when the striper comes back in on exit eleven. But, because, and maybe we can, he would be interested in doing, uh, our pavement markings and striping for us.
Have you contacted them yet to see?
We contacted them on the front end to bid the project and they were so busy that they didn't give us a bid. But we're hoping that, and that's what we're hoping is that, you know, we're in the very, this is a kind of a busy time of the year for people. Maybe it'd be a nice small project for them or something, you know?
I know, sorry, did you say that? Well, I was going to ask you a question there, but would it be feasible to buy a, a striping machine? I mean, to do the, the curb, I mean, the curbs and the walkways? You can't do the street, I know, because you'd have to have a big truck and everything else. But would it be feasible to do that, to get all our crosswalks and everything else?
That, that's actually a thermoplastic and we have done that before, is my understanding. It's, it's a material that we heat up and torch it down. That's the arrows, the crosswalk. So, and part of that was, of that project was the pavement markings, we call it. And then we have the striping, which is done with the very, and we talked about that, that's probably a million dollar truck, you know?
Well, I would say the truck, but you can buy, you can buy a separate machine that just does the walks and that. I've seen them use them, I mean, a regular paint machine. But I, I mean, I understand the truck would be kind of outrageous to buy because you're using it. But they do have a machine that, you know, you can stripe, uh, crosswalks and stuff like that. And even spray along the curb instead of having those poor guys on their hands and knees.
Yeah, we could look into that, if there's options.
Well, I mean, we're having trouble getting it done, so maybe this is the only way you can get some of it done.
I, I think I remember though that you said that in order for them to be lasting strapping, we have to have it done differently than just with that kind of.
Yeah, we want to use, it's an epoxy based paint this time. I came on in December of twenty and I guess we striped since September of nineteen, just a few months before I started. And it was already gone by that, into that, that winter.
Especially on the bricks.
Yeah, it, it does not hold up well on bricks at all. That's the other thing about these bricks, these papers. On the pavement, we can, we're, we're thinking about going in and routing, depressing. CDO does that. That way when the plows come in, they ride over the top of the markings.
Right.
And, uh, but on bricks, you can't do that. If you take the surface off the brick, I think it might destroy the integrity of the brick. So it, there's a lot of complications with those bricks.
Yes, it does. You know, just, I don't know how many paving or, uh, striping companies are hard in the state of Colorado, but.
We reached out to four of them on this job. And I guess they're all busy, I guess.
Were they all out of Denver or Springs or?
Basically up north, yeah.
Have you checked anybody like Amarillo or?
I have, I have to go back and, and see where they come from, but I thought they were all Colorado based.
Yeah, because if we wait too long, we'll be in the middle, you know, back in winter and then it can't do it at all. So that's, that's an issue.
I talked to Audrey, since we bid the project, I guess we have the ability now to go out. And maybe try to find a company that's interested, not have, we've done our due diligence and getting the budget. Now we'll find somebody maybe, but they kind of, you know, we might be held over the barrel on their price, but we'll see what it is. We have an estimated fee on it, so at least we know. Just worked with Audrey this last week, you're putting together a sidewalk program. It's, but it's seventy-five thousand dollars. And it seems like we're getting a lot of people that are very interested in it. It's all the final form, uh, applications all prepared, all the details put together, so.
And that's one where the owner would pay for part of it and we would pay for the other, half and half, I think is what it is?
Yeah, it's a fifty fifty split. The city has the right to refuse or reject any project, seventy-five hundred dollar max on our end.
I was going to ask you, you know, that's not a lot of money, seventy-five thousand for that program.
It's not, maybe we'll get ten projects.
It's first come, first served, so what if a person applies and the money runs out? Is there going to be additional funding later for that program?
Well, that's why we put seventy-five hundred max per person, we're not. So if you come in and you want to do it, the maximum that we'll allow, allocate per project is seventy-five hundred dollars. That gives us at least ten projects.
Are you sending out notifications for critical areas that are liability or casualty?
Well, we're, we're going to advertise, uh, so on our website and-
And the newspaper as well?
Yeah. So it seems like just the word we're getting on the street, there's people that want to, are interested in it. And it's both for residential and commercial.
And if, if council's not opposed, I mean, we can, we could always make requests for additional funds through, um, the quarterly marijuana fund or reallocate some of the funds that are in the budget already. This was, seventy-five thousand dollars is in the budget for this year. So that's what we know we have.
I think Yelbo said did something similar last year. Seen a program of match, fifty fifty match.
I think it's a good idea, we have a lot of sidewalks need to be revised.
Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions for just on this program or anything that these talk about?
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. I did, um, I was following along pretty well. I did miss one part. Bob, would you mind giving a short recap of the alley A status, please?
Sure, uh, so basically, the project was designed, uh, next door, completely done. It went out to bid, we were getting ready to bid the project and, um, it, uh, it came about that, hey, you need to put in a stairwell with some steps or check with the, uh, the architect. Paul Glenn is doing the design for Dana on that building. And at that time, it, it basically came to a screeching halt because, um, we left out an area. But when we found out that, that stairs were going in, it just didn't make sense to do all the concrete, that flat work. Because you have a nine foot wall getting down to that lower grade, it's going to require a pretty extensive excavation. It doesn't make any sense to tear out our new concrete to put those stairs in, so. They, so it came to, probably the best scenario was to let them, because they got to pay for that. We weren't going to pay for the stairs, that was on them, you know? Let them install their stairs and walls and then we come back in and do the, our L A A improvements.
Oh, is that, is that stairwell to a basement access?
It, it's the basement of the building, that's correct.
Okay. So do we have an expectation of how long that delay will be?
They, they told us at the time it was only going to be a few weeks, but it's already ran past that. So what we're doing now is we're going to have an, we're going to put together a, we need an easement to identify that stairwell area. And then we're going to put a development agreement together, which basically if they don't follow through with that, because we heard rumor that that building may sell, uh, if it does, we don't know what the next owner's going to do. So that's why we're going to put a development agreement together and, and if it-
All right, thank you.
Sure. So bike lane striping, uh, that's ready to go. We just need to, we got authorization from CDO to go forward, so we just needed to go out to bid on that. I remember that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, am I correct? CDO?
I think that's correct.
Then we have audible, uh, street crossing signals. We had to go up, request for proposals on that, this is kind of technical and nobody in my office or electrical department knew how to, how those things are, it's all kind of specialized equipment. You walk up to a signal and talks to you, it's part of the ADA, but. So anyway, we're going to get a consultant to help us design that. Americana Road is proceeding. We started our water vein last week, we got it through commercial. Ran into a hiccup when we got to the bridge. Tried to iron out what's going on there, we had a meeting today and it sounds like they're going to bring a structural engineer down. It's about crossing the wing wall of that bridge. So it's, they are working on different other aspects of that project as we, there's, um, another detention pond that's going in. And, uh, the, the electrical, uh, conduits are being installed as well. Our curb cut, uh, uh, projects were eighty-eight projects, the first phase is about completed, we're up on Hillside. Once that's done, I think we have one on Maple and Main Street, and then we're on to phase two. So that next project, phase two, we'd like to go east on Main Street.
On the curb cuts, uh, you know, we had an agreement, this goes back four years ago with the Housing Authority, on a few projects or in his phase two or any of their projects in that phase two.
Right now, no, but we met with Tanya, uh, oh shoot, this is before Mr. Babnik passed. So this is probably about five or six months ago. And we told her on, we, if we can and we have the money when we're doing First Street, it would make sense then to, to go further east and pick up those additional cuts. Because we're already at Chestnut, we could get Walnut and the, it just depends how funds work out.
There was that one right there at Housing Authority, uh, that was the one they wanted us to look at, but the cost was, it was humongous. It was just way out there. So the thing that was, way back when the project started, they were looking at maybe some other projects around town. There weren't very many that they were looking for, I think it was maybe three or four, I, I may be wrong. But there weren't like ten or fifteen, it was just a small amount of curb cuts that they were asking for.
She talked specifically on just extending the Winston First Street. But as you know, that curb there, and the next block after, uh, after Chestnut, it's almost, it's a two foot curb.
And that was the paddock.
Those are, those are expensive because we have to do a landing, a switchback or just, or just high dollar, they got a car reeling. Kind of like we did on the paddock.
And that's when I was saying, that's, and when we looked at it, uh, that was when Mr. Beach was, you know, working.
Yeah, she reminded me that, the, the-
And that cost, the cost of that was just so exorbitant that he, you know, he said I'm not to go with that, but it's a two bucks.
Right. We talked about County Road twenty point two last week. They already have a hundred and twenty feet of that curb and gutter in, they were forming today. And Azani's ready to turn around, come back in and do the paving once the curb and gutter, he's going to be doing some million stuff on that road. We're putting together a request for proposal for Main Street from Anamis up to Four Way Stot. So, uh, we're putting also a request for proposal for the Centrefa Trail pedestrian access from Saddle Road out to C G O. We have, we do have the grant for that, I think one point eight mil. So we got to, we're going to get a consultant to design that. Internally, we, we've been using our, uh, our brush head off of our Bobcat. Forestry head, that we've been down in the Boulevard and down in the river bottom. We did blow a seal, we're not sure why, but that machine only has like fifty hours on it. So we, it's up at Fort, it's not Fort Rivers, it's at Bobcat, we're trying to figure out what's going on with it.
And when I looked at that, with, with, it cleaned out, looks nice.
Boulevard or River or both?
The River.
Okay, yeah, it, it, it made short work of those willows, so. Yeah, it's the right machine, but, and that-
I'll talk to you about, uh, there was a suggestion that was made to me by someone, is when you get on the other side of the Anamis or the commercial street bridge to maybe do something where you do kind of like a, well, close to, not close to the river, but, and, but leave maybe a little bit of vegetation right in the middle and create a walkway around both sides of that and just leave vegetation in the middle, that was the recommendation I got.
Okay. Sure. We're continuing to patch and cut weeds, so the weather's kind of played a little bit on patching, but we still have patching to do. We're cutting weeds with all the moisture, weeds are just going crazy right now. And we have money budgeted, uh, in the budget for a new building out at the city garage. We just got to get it out to bid, as well as the drainage project. When we get high rains like we do at R D R out there turns into a lake. So we want to put the infrastructure in to get rid of that stormwater.
Now that the, now, right now that COVID is kind of starting to wane a little bit. A few years back, we were able to utilize some of the prisoners. Do you know if they are doing anything yet with prisoners, allowing them to come in?
I have not heard anything.
Because they, they took up a lot of, some of the work that I think that, one of your department, um, were able to do, you know?
Correct.
Cutting weeds and some of the others.
That would be wonderful.
It would be a big help if they, if they're, they're available.
Sure.
I'll make a call tomorrow and see, see what they say. Worst they can say is no.
I don't have any more of this, do you guys have any questions?
Just one, simple one. We had talked about doing Main Street here. What about you?
We're, we're going to put out a request for proposal for a good design, a consultant to design it. And then we'll oversee the construction in-house. We can do that ourselves, the design, overseeing the construction management inspection. Audrey was asking about replacing the sidewalk in front of the Fox and I told her it really needs, it's all dependent. That whole street probably has to be raised. I was looking at the cross slope on it, Wally took me over there the other day. It's way past ADA requirement, past the two percent cross slope. So to do that, the curb head has to come up, which means the street has to come up so that we get it in compliance. So it, I would just recommend patching the, the fire line and the, for now, and then we'll, we'll replace it anytime. From, it'll go building face to building face, new curb, gutter, sidewalk, street.
And lighting?
And lines?
And lighting?
Oh, lighting, yes, absolutely lighting. I thought she said lines, now we're going to leave it. Plenty of lines on, there's no lines on now, right?
That's right.
I'm kidding.
Okay, any other questions?
I do, I have one, um, that's not a simple question, probably not. Where in the, um, progress that we're making on the DOJ work that we have to do is the Central Park Ball Stadium? Where is that? Is that just way out on the horizon or is there any plan in place?
You talking about Central Park?
Yes, the basic stadium.
Yeah, so before Mike left, I, I took him over there and I, I, I think we can, um, we don't have to tear down the existing structure, I looked at it. There's a lot of improvements that we can make to the facility, um, and save ourselves a lot of money. I'd like to go in and, and do a brick veneer on the, kind of like where Wrigley is behind the backstop. Put a new cap on that, that's going to, um, I'm going to do a terrace on the upper end. You wear its terrace right now, but take them across, that way it gives people additional seating. Now, keep in mind, you don't have a, a net there, but it just gives overflow seating. There's a little bit of concrete needs to be replaced inside the facility, especially on the bottom and I think one of the stair runs. And then we have to do an ADA accessible path. And I'd like to do an ADA bathroom as well, that way we get rid of those, uh, those porta potties that are there because they, they constantly smell. That way the players, uh, and the people, they don't have to go clear over to the other end to use the facility. So I think we can do that and save a lot of money and we're going to try and do that in-house.
Okay, because I, I met last week with, um, a group here that's, that are disability activists and they had questions about, some of them had been present at the incident on July fourth and in wheelchairs. And there was no quick way to get out of the stadium when that happened. That, that you literally have to lift the wheelchair and take it out of there. So I, I talked with them and I, I let them know I'd be asking Bob to see where we are.
Right, so to be ADA compliant, but we have to be able to get people down to the lower concession area. So that would require a kind of a extensive ramp, because you can only go thirty inches before you hit a landing.
Yeah.
And if you drop thirty more, basically every thirty feet, you're getting, you're getting thirty inches every thirty feet. So it's going to be an area, if we have to switch back, we will, if we can go down and not do that, it's just going to, we do have grades. We, we have shot that, we want to put an underdrain system in the, in the actual ball field. And we'd like to turf that, so like today, if the trainers wanted to play tonight, they could play. But they can't play today because they got it, we had a half inch rain, if not more, last night. It, there was standing water at first, second and third today over there. But if we had an underdrain system with a turf infill, it could, it could have been on the fill. And it saves on the maintenance, the watering, it's just a win-win.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's really good with the mission.
So on that particular project, uh, would it be a two Vegas project part or two, two-part project? One would be the, the grandstand itself and then the field- One would be the grandstand itself, and then the field separate?
I would like to combine it all together.
And do you have any?
If funds permit, and we can get a grant, I'd like to do the infill as well as the grandstands at the same time.
The anticipated timeline of where you may, when you might be looking at?
I think by the end of, by the end of this year, I think we might have design drawings done.
Okay.
So we could start, it'd be a nice spring project.
Good.
We just gotta figure out where, and we may have to utilize south side park, we have a baseball field up there. Next summer is the high school or college, whoever's playing on the bigger fields may have to utilize south side.
Mr. Williamson, any other questions for Mr. Dust?
No, this time, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Father. Okay, who's the next project on the city?
That's it there.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, I guess Chamber of Commerce.
Awesome. Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, Zoomies. My name's Amanda Corth, I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce here. This is Claudia Henning, she is the chair for our ambassador program. And Amy Navarette would be with us, but about four hours ago, she started turning green. She got some kind of stomach bug. So I'm here today to tell you a lot about what we've been doing with the chamber. What I'd love to hear from you is what your priorities are, where it is that we meld in with what it is that you consider priorities, okay? So first, to tell you a little bit about some of the homework that we've done and the legwork. Chamber of Commerce is kind of an old dated concept, right? So all chambers have to change to cater a lot more to the businesses, and what does that look like? Right? And with the, oh, is it not showing up on there too? Thank you. So after this unprecedented with the COVID, what does that look like? How can we support?
There's a button right to the right-hand side, I can raise those.
No, no, they're over there.
I guess, oh, the others got it.
Now it's disappeared off. So what we've done, we've gone to a lot of the longtime businesses in Trinidad and said, what would you like to get from your Chamber of Commerce? How is it that we can serve you? We want to align with the objectives of the city and of the county. We see ourselves as the entity that can cast a vision for the future within our business community. And we want to engage and equip businesses with a growth mindset for anything that's coming down the pipe. We also are collaborating with many, many partners. We've already gone to the Pueblo Chamber, we went to Pueblo West, and this morning we had a whole presentation with Walsenburg, because Carlton Croft, the economic development director there, called and said, how can we collaborate together? So we did a whole presentation to them, and I'll show you some of the ideas that we came up with, that a lot of them really liked. So we want to embrace businesses from all sectors. That includes veterinarian businesses, that includes nonprofits, that includes the farmers and ranchers that are the underpinning for the economic stability for this whole area. Right? Industry may come and go, but farmers and ranchers remain. So we're reaching out to businesses in all of Los Anamis County, not just Trinidad. Also, we're getting the feedback from businesses, like I said. And we reorganized our ambassador committee to celebrate and support businesses, which is why Claudia is here today. So the whole idea is, the objectives is to bring growth and opportunities to small businesses, residents, tourism, investors, and the colleges. When we talked to Walsenburg this morning, we talked to La Vida, and we talked to Conchara, a number of people from Spanish Peaks Chamber of Commerce, and I guess the president of the Highway of Legends, who I can't remember his name right now. And we said, what if we collaborate on calendars to give tourists reasons to come down here every single weekend? What if we made sure all of our calendars are in line so we can have festivals that maybe don't overlap as much as they do right now? And maybe we have the same kind of forums, everybody wants to have vendor fairs, and with the cost of gas, it's very expensive for those vendors or artisans to come down and be in any festivals. What if we have something that they can say, which festivals do you want to participate in? Do you want to do all of them? Here, you get a discount. Or which ones do you want to come to? That's a boon to the hotels down here, it's a boon to the tourists who might want to come down here, okay? So one of the first ideas is we had is doing a poker run. A lot of people do different poker runs, but what if we can make this a lot bigger and make it more national, so people come from all over the country, come to a poker run on the Legend pathways. It's a seven-card stud, we have cash prize for the best hand, and then end of run might be a concert. So everything could end maybe at the caveman festival at Monument Lake Ranch, or Monument Lake Resort, right?
Good question.
Yes, please.
What's a poker run? I don't know.
Oh, I'm so sorry, a motorcycle run. So it's a motorcycle rally, and a poker run, there might be seven different places that somebody can pick up a card, and then your cards, you, the best hand wins. So it's seven-card stud. But the idea would be, and I just came, these banners, I know we recently got these, it would just be a way to repurpose those banners, with all apologies to the guy, to Jay Gillespie, who I think designed these, to put the suits on the front of those, so anybody who participates can see some of the different features that we have in the areas, a lot of the different tourist attractions. And on the back might be a map of all of the Highway of Legends, with all the cities noted, or Profile Rock, or all those different things. So another one would be Farm to Table. I already met with Marty and Jared about this, they love the idea, and they even want to incorporate it this year, although it might be a little bit quick. So it's gratitude and attention to the underpinnings of our ever-present economic chase, would highlight the outdoor industry and recreation, as well as five-one C3s in the area. What does that look like? We'd feature farmers and ranchers from the area, this might also be one weekend here, one weekend in Walsenburg. Approximately ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars per plate, would be maybe outdoors or indoors at a farm. Also, we learned there's a new lavender farm, there's beekeepers in the area. We'd feature M-Ration outfitters in the area, because if you're paying ninety dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars per plate, you might want to know where it is that you can hunt, or where you can go and fish, or send people who come in from out of town. Also featuring charities, people who live here want to support the charities in the area, businesses want to support the charities in the area. We might have a website to promote farmers' markets and Farm to Table dinner. Or the promotion might be cookbooks, so every year there'd be a new cookbook for Farm to Table, featuring different farmers and their recipes.
I got a question for you when I see this, you have an approximate ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars per person. You know, that is a little concerning for the cost because of the wage scale in the area.
Absolutely.
That'd be something that you're gonna have to take into consideration.
Absolutely, we do have to figure, but we also got to figure the cost of some chef who's gonna coordinate all the dinner, because you can't have, you know, one beef producer who's saying, let's make steak, and then somebody who's got lavender or tomatoes saying, let's make something, you know, a Mexican meal, right? So we have to have, there's gonna have to be paid people who try and coordinate this menu, coordinate the cookbooks, et cetera. So yeah, you're right, but I am thinking it's gonna be a higher dollar meal, okay, to bring out those people who would support that. I don't know what the dollar cost might would be, but we have to do a lot of research on that. We feature outfitters in the area, so maybe it might be a continual video or something, or collage of the different outfitters in the area. Also charities, we might have tables there with charities, what kind of charities we have in the area. And then facilitate, this would be long-term locally sourced for restaurants. What does that look like? Are there locally sourced police that say, no, you have to be sourcing sixty percent of everything that you have in your restaurant, has to be locally sourced? What are the rules around that? But wouldn't that be a fantastic thing as a feature for tourism, right? That we say everything is locally sourced for these restaurants, so long-term, I'm looking at that. Also, we met with the Colorado Restaurant Foundation several weeks ago, who I believe would love to participate in this kind of program and help us get it off the ground. I was also told that CSU has some great resources for doing Farm to Table dinners. So when I talked to Marty and Jared, they said, we'd love to do that after the Rad Race. The Rad Race, of course, sponsored by Lifetime Fitness. I don't know how many bicyclists want to eat a heavy meal, you know, usually they have a little granola bar, and maybe a power drink, I don't know. So I don't know, that's an idea.
Have you talked to the people from CSU yet?
Not yet. We got a lot of phone calls to make, but yeah, we have not spoken with them. But we have spoken with other people who do that same thing, and actually, Almac's Kitchen sources about sixty percent of their menu locally sourced. They might be a model to look at for down the road, how it is that we do that.
I did have a contact person that I was working with a little over a year ago, and they were working with the college here.
Agrotourism or tourism?
And it was, if you want, I can give you the lady's name and see if that would be.
We would love that.
I can get you.
Love that. So another one, Colorado Gateway Collaborations, love this one. Now you're entering the entertainment portion of the evening, I hope. So pickleball is getting to be a really good, big thing. Anybody here play pickleball? Not yet, do you know what it is? It doesn't involve a pickle. Yes, of course. It doesn't really involve a pickle. So it's sweeping the nation, and look at nearly five million pickleball players in the country now, since its beginning of growth, since they started tracking growth in 2014. And that map denotes that Colorado's twelfth in the number of pickleball courts per one hundred thousand, and that's three point nine two. We came up with the idea of maybe doing like a pickleball tournament, talked to Jared about it, he's been playing in Redcomb. Suddenly, I've got this enormous email with all these people on it that said, I want to produce pay, I would love to do a tournament. So we kind of came up with an idea, and I desperately, desperately want to call it this. It's the first annual Colorado Gateball, the Gateway Pickle Tickle. Okay, so maybe it's over two to three weekends in October, Raton, Trinidad, and Pueblo. Right? We have pickleball clinics, pickleball tournaments, highlight outdoor recreation and real estate, work promote lifestyle wellness, think of all the businesses that would want to participate in that. And you know that Raton just got like three hundred thousand dollars for doing like pickleball courts down there, and they're supposed to be completed next year. So think about all the merchandising opportunity, think about the people coming from all over being able to play. Yeah, so think about people with their paddle balls, or their pickleball paddles. They can have the logo on there, and they're going all over Colorado, hey, I want to get involved in the Pickle Tickle. So they might come every year, so first annual Pickle Smoothie.
So these courts, are they more like a tennis court?
Half the size, half the size of a tennis court.
So what we could actually do is take our tennis courts in town.
Already has been done, the problem is, is that it's not covered, and it's very hot in the summertime, after nine o'clock.
So, so long-term, this would be a consistent annual event to increase awareness and draw tourists. So great merchandising opportunity, if you know anything about pickleball, there's like Dink Floyd is a t-shirt, there's Pickleball Make Retirement Great Again. And then think about the merchandising.
This is a senior sport, is that?
That's a great question.
I'm looking at it online.
Seventeen percent of people playing it are over the age of sixty-five, but now one-third of the people playing are under the age of twenty-five. So it has been looked at as like a retirement, things that over fifty people play it. And now you're getting younger and younger people playing it.
Well, yeah, it's a lighter weight wiffle ball with a different material, so it's not gonna do the same thing as a tennis ball, it's gonna like hang in the air. So people that are sixty-five or older can laterally move without killing themselves.
Yeah. So I love that particular one. Now this one, National Night Out, and the picture I include, there is one that's become very famous since this weekend. It's that guy with the machete. So we also heard from a business owner that tried to throw away trash this weekend, opened up the dumpster and found two people shooting up in it. Everybody knows crime has increased, right? And a lot of policemen are leaving very large cities and coming rural. What if we embrace our law enforcement, and we do events around National Night Out? Is anybody familiar with National Night Out? Okay, so what if we do events that lead up to that? And that includes going into schools, talking about Act on Drugs. If anybody's familiar with Lynn Reimer, she's come here a few times and talked to the different schools and talked to businesses about drugs, I play golf with her every once in a while. So also talk to the schools about different career opportunities. And what that would mean, one of the things that we heard from some of the longtime businesses is that they get disappointed that a lot of kids that graduate from high school or graduate from college, skeedaddle out of here. We'd love to give them a reason to stay. And what if we went to some of the schools and talked to them about some of the large employers in the area and the careers that they can get at the New Elk Mine, at Shea Organics, at Evergreen, any number of those kind of places, and talk to them about the opportunities here, talk to them about the entrepreneur certificate, right? That you can get at Trinidad State College. And actually, when I was talking to Wally, he said that a lot of times they get grants for new businesses, people get the grants, start the business, business fails, and then he sees the same people in line. We want to teach people how to be entrepreneurial and sustain a business. So maybe includes financial education, inspirational speakers, job fair, and talking about internships. All of this leading up to National Night Out. Next, nonprofits, we have a whole lot of nonprofits in this area, all along the Highway of Legends. And charitable giving has increased more than forty percent over pre-COVID levels, and we don't expect that to go down anytime soon, because people know about the war in Ukraine. So their pockets have opened up, and they're giving more. So what if, just like everybody, we're trying to do more with less, right? I went to a fundraiser for one of the nonprofits here in town, and the silent auction items were not that great. Well, wouldn't it be great if we could talk to the businesses about the tax benefit they get for donating goods and services? And they can say what charities that they really enjoy, what they'd like to contribute to, so then the nonprofits can have a directory, that if they have any fundraising, silent auction, they can call those people instead of running around. Because the nonprofit I went to, the fundraiser, the director's doing everything she can. She can't go around all of these different businesses and try and gather stuff, so wouldn't it be great if we had that? So it's also an opportunity, if we look at them as a group, to have more exposure to festivals and events. So now we get to chamber events, opportunities for small businesses, unique events, right? So for instance, when I talk about Santa Fe Trail Days, it's always been like kind of embracing history, right? But a lot of the bigger events that you see in Colorado have real quirky things. Do you know about the Netherlands, the Frozen Dead Guy Festival in Netherlands? Okay, do you know about Mike the Headless Chicken Festival in Fruta? Does anybody have a farm animal that has its head cut off and has been running around for a while? If not, we probably need to come up with some unique ideas to attract people from the state of Colorado and further. So we want to enhance the character of Trinidad as a destination. So we got the locally sourced blueprint for growth, we want to reduce welfare consumption here, and also more community services, and maybe in the process, reduce the immediate age of our community by making these really exciting, interesting kind of festivals. So Santa Fe Trail Days, make more distinct identity, embrace the natural features, or collaborate with other organizations, again, doing more with less. What other organizations can we bring in that can do a whole lot of the heavy lifting, right? Because I'm never moving a portable toilet again. So, and unique, and we want to educate, intrigue, and attract. So one thing might be, and I've talked a little bit to Dr. Eppers about this, and she's very concerned more about bringing in a lot more students, she needs higher enrollment. But I want to give you some examples of some of the things we've talked about. So Santa Fe Trail Days, we could capitalize on gunsmithing and work with Trinidad State College. Why? Because there's five million more first-time gun owners since the 2020 pandemic. And sixteen point six million bought a firearm, as compared to thirteen point eight million in 2019. There's a fifty-eight percent increase in black ownership of guns since 2020, including a ninety percent increase of black customers at gun stores, and eighty-seven percent increase in black female customers. So focus on gunsmithing as an art form and safety. So we could have demo classes, we could do safety classes, shooting competitions, and it could be in collaboration with the Willington Center, because they do like a black powder shooting competition every year, might be around that. Also, Western reenactments, so cowboy poetry, Western music, blacksmithing, et cetera. We can partner and leverage the Willington Center and the Colorado Shooting Association to help us with, again, heavy lifting, doing more with less. Okay, another opportunity, another idea is ADA, just what this gentleman here was talking about, with ADA. We heard about the triggers and need to do some ADA adaptations there. And I first, in doing this one, I first put a picture of Steve Hamer on there, and then I thought differently. Let's turn a negative experience into a very positive experience, because what he did, the whole city needed anyway, right? So what if we did adaptive adventures? So what if we did adaptive adventures? Okay, House Bill 211318 passed in 2021 Outdoor Equity Grant Program. Okay, it's coupled with the economic development of outdoor recreation. Everybody knows what CDR Associates has been doing to monetize or to economic development around outdoor recreation. Do in collaboration with them, with in fact REI, and say, what kind of things can we do for the handicapped to do a weekend of outdoor adventures? So it could be coupled with Wounded Warrior and REI. Okay? So that could include company recruiting, education, event sponsorships, et cetera. These are some of the other chamber events that we're working on. We saw the golf tournament that we're talking about planning, the Taste of Trinidad, that was originally conceived as a festival. But we already have like the marketplace that is, you know, in essence, kind of a festival. What if we did something with the launch of the marketplace? And all the restaurants would be better served to create a restaurant map with accurate opening, closing, like you and I talked the other day. I had the same thing happen with somebody who was in town a week and a half ago. There was no place that was open on a Saturday afternoon. And that might include a coupon book. Also, we're going to start working on Shop Local, which last week Amy had just got into her role, so we didn't have enough time to plan in advance of that, so we want to start planning around that. And then the last, last one, these are other chamber events that we thought could be tacked on to other events. You know, everybody's been for a long time in their COVID hidey hole, and they go, "Hey, I really like Netflix," right? So they don't exit a lot. So trying to get people to come to events and different kinds of festivals can be a challenge. So what can we do with some of our member events to try and bring more people, right? And we talked about a shredding event. So local businesses for shredding, because they're very limited in how much they can bring to a shredder. So we bring in a truck, and maybe we make it like a shredding and shredding event. So maybe in the spring, the shredding and shredding might be shredding pounds. So we'd have peak performance, we'd have hot yoga place, et cetera, talk about their schedules for athletics and stuff during the summer. You get the shredding and shredding. All right, and then smoke spotting class. Love this one. I went to a smoke spotting class with Fisher's Peak Fire Department, and they gave a little presentation on how you can tell the difference between water vapor and clouds and smoke spotting. And with as much concern as there is around wildfires down here, right? Wouldn't it be great to have a class like that tacked on to another event? And we'd also bring in somebody from the U.S. Forest Service, who I've already talked to, and list, I believe, in La Jolla, maybe, who can come in and talk about legislation to help mitigate for wildfires in Colorado, or what the future looks like in fighting wildfires, that kind of stuff. And then also provide vendors that might sell fire extinguishers, fire saves, that says for fire saves, et cetera. And that's everything. And I talked really fast to try and deal with them.
Questions?
Your presentation is organized very well, but I still feel we need to market Trinidad in a positive direction by highlighting the history and culture. Replacing the Santa Fe Trail Festival with the Purgatory River of Los Souls Festival is a good idea though.
Okay.
Okay, Trinidad needs to include personal testimony. That may entice others as well. It'll make people stop here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, absolutely. Love that.
I don't have a question, just an observation. Maybe before tourist season next year, we should have, the chamber should have an event. Let's bring clean Trinidad to make sure that we're ready for the tourism season to start.
Okay.
And then maybe after everybody cleans the front of their buildings and it looks spiky, we have a dinner outside on Main Street.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Just getting ready for company.
Getting ready.
That's pretty cleaning.
Uh huh, yeah, we need to do that. And the Taste of Trinidad was a good idea. It worked in the past. Motorcycle Club I belong to did a poker run, and we did it the Saturday before Mother's Day, and we used to call it the mother of all poker runs.
Oh, that's nice. We talked about, when we talked with Walsenburg about, we talked about shoulder season, right? Because there's Memorial Day, and there's Fourth of July, or there's Labor Day. And between Memorial Day and Fourth of July, there's not a lot going on, right? So it could be in there or the third week in May, but that's kind of iffy. You don't know what the weather's like.
Right, so just FYI, it worked before.
Thank you.
One comment I have is that I think you have some great ideas there, and the issue would be to get people to back you up and get some of this started. And that's going to be, I think, the biggest thing.
Oh, absolutely.
To get the right ideas moving forward and then work from there would be a great thing for Trinidad.
And one thing around, I mean, I know very little about grants, and we've already interviewed like three different grant writers. And obviously, to get a grant, you have to make sure this is sustainable, right? So not always coming back for a grant year after year. So we tried to come up with ideas that sort of align what some of the grants might be. So yeah, and again, it's doing more with less, which is another reason why we were talking about Walsenburg, and talking with Walsenburg about doing this all together, because we're spreading the heavy lifting across. We don't have enough people or enough money.
That's why I was gonna say, how many people do you have in your Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, in the chamber, like members?
In the chambers, yeah, that are active.
I think we're like at 110 members, but on the board, we've got nine. And then how many ambassadors do we have now?
Uh, nine.
Nine, nine ambassadors and nine board members.
I think it's a great idea between Walsenburg, even Rattum and stuff, because we're all in this one area. So if one doesn't have something to bring it back, but yeah, I think you've got some real good ideas and some energy. If you can keep it up, it'd be really great.
Yeah.
I'm glad to meet you, and I'm glad to know about all that you're doing. I think all those ideas are excellent. I always am looking for ideas that promote this area and help people to understand what a spectacular place it is.
Yes.
One thing about the Taste of Trinidad, I wasn't here when that was going on, but I was in Tucson. We used to have this event called Tucson Meet Yourself, which was, we had all the various groups that were present in that city would come to like a fair, and there would be dancing and food, and it was a spectacular event. It was really well received by the community. I think it is something we need here, I think something that honors the people who came here first and settled this place, the miners from all the different countries and all the different foods. I've always thought that would be a really fun thing to do. One question I had, I wanted to ask you kind of to follow up on some things I had heard before. It seems like the chamber is taking a new direction. In the past, I had heard that it had become very political. Is that something that you all have?
We are Switzerland.
Okay.
Everything is about growing businesses.
Excellent. That's what I, that's my perspective of what.
Well, you specialize in Washington's chocolate. Yeah. Multi-tool.
Multi-tool, multi-tool.
I'd like to hear that.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm good.
So we have a, I guess, on the agenda, steps to becoming the tourist town. We have a traffic study. You want to stick around for that after the traffic study?
Yeah, sure. Oh, after the traffic for some discussion? Yeah, absolutely. So of everything I said, was there any, oh, yeah, priority number one is Xed, priority number two. Because like I said, I want to make sure this aligns with the direction y'all are going in, what's in the future, et cetera. Oh, that's why we was.
Mr. Wilson, do you have any questions for?
First off, thank you so much for coming in this evening. I really do appreciate the zeal that you have for Trinidad and the job. I also think that it's, in my opinion, it's refreshing to hear big picture thinking on a national level to try and attract more people to town. If we can just get more people in town, that will, that will help every business, obviously. And even businesses that aren't directly affected, say, by tourism. The more people we have that come to Trinidad and enjoy it, the more people that may decide to move here. That increases the hiring pool for places such as the mine at Evergreen, which you alluded to. So I think that's fantastic, everything you're doing. I think it would be very beneficial if in some way we could have some sort of ongoing communication, clear updates between the chamber and city council. I think that would be super helpful myself. But I very much appreciate what you're doing, and thank you for your effort and energy, and the chamber's effort and energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it's been known not only in Trinidad but across the state. You know, chambers kind of have to periodically almost do revisioning, and it sounds like that's what you're trying to do here. And you've only got 110 members right now. To grow that, you're going to have to prove to the rest of the members or the rest of the business owners in this community or individuals what you are doing to bring them on board. The projects that you have are quite elaborate and very extensive, and I hope that you can accomplish them. I think the big thing that you're going to have to do is, like you said, which is, where do you start?
Yeah.
What step one, which projects are you going to start with first, second, third? And the other thing that's concerning is that the entire city, we need to start looking at, what do we need to do in the winter, in the midst of winter?
Okay.
To bring people in.
Okay.
Because it seems like once maybe mid-December comes around, it just dies.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that we need to kind of begin to think a little bit differently there. What, you know, I think we need to put some heads together and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Good idea is Branson, Missouri, does a Christmas festival, and they do a lot of lighting and stuff with the, what do you call them? Glanlairs that they put with the candles.
Luminaria?
Yeah, and stuff like that. That might be something to look out to, to get some, because we did put a pretty good allocation of money into the Christmas decorations. And maybe we could do something like that because that's a good time of the season, maybe a festival that would be good downtown to bring the vendors out and do something like that because, like you say, there's not much going on at that time. But that would be something I think would really be nice.
I wonder if we do the holiday lighting parade or holiday parade, right?
Yeah, we do that.
Maybe something in coordination with that, or are you talking about another weekend supper event?
No, I think all that together would really be good.
That brings me to another thought. You know, we have all these organizations that do different things in the community. Maybe the chamber would do well to be, collaborate with all these people. Because really partnerships are the only way to go.
Strategic partnerships are marketing, yes. Which people are you talking about? Because we've already reached out to a lot.
Hometown holidays.
Oh, yeah, and Main Street, the Main Street businesses, absolutely. Yeah, and even the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we're trying to meet with Yolanda.
I think that's an excellent idea, those two groups.
More with less.
Yes.
You know, one of the things that, like I said, try to figure out something to do between, like you got a good idea with Christmas, but between January and probably April, your captive audience are the locals.
Uh huh.
So if you can figure something at a low cost, because I was talking about the economics of the community, because they're going to be your captive audience to be able to do something during those sore months. So think along, think along them lines.
Okay.
Question, have you coordinated any of this with the tourism board?
We meet with them this, the day after tomorrow.
Great.
At 9:00 AM, in here.
I got my thing. Maybe you should think about what Mayor said about that gap between January, April.
Yeah.
Like do the taste and all those smaller events to keep things buzzing until tourist season kicks off officially.
Yeah, and we'd have to come up with a different name than Taste of Trinidad because that's actually a Facebook page. And so I like your idea. What did you say was in tourism?
Trinidad Meet Yourself. It's Tucson Meet Yourself.
Okay. Did they just serve meat?
No.
Sounds like it's like a shield of them.
No, it's like meat yourself. Hello.
Oh.
You know, another thing I just thought of, one of the things that I, you know, that we need to try to do is to get the locals that have been here a long time, as well as the newcomers into the community. Maybe a meet and greet of some kind.
Oh, like a welcome wagon. We'd love that. Okay, that's great. I'm going to think more about the welcome wagon thing. And the whole idea of existing residents, that's one of the reasons we'd like to go out to the schools, right? Financial literacy and entrepreneur, and these are the majors that you can get at Trinidad College. And these are businesses that you can work for, keeping people here.
Just something you may want to, I brought this up at, I think, the last work session, or meeting. The college comes to town, the college students come to town, and a lot of times they don't feel like they've been very well welcomed. So I mentioned at the last meeting that maybe we should try to do something, I know we put a big sign up, but maybe have something at Chaminade Park or one of the parks, or we, you know, we can get the students to come down for the day, get them hot dogs, hamburgers, balloons, I don't care what it is, but just kind of a welcoming event.
All the teams.
The teams, maybe get, maybe get different restaurants.
There's no beer spray.
Maybe, maybe get the restaurants to offer something.
Kind of like a key to the city.
Yeah, something like that.
We'd love that, key to the city. We've talked about having like welcome bags. So these are the different businesses you can visit, et cetera. We're also talking with Dr. Epper about doing, Dr. Epper and Linda about doing a fan day. So for some sorts of.
On the flip side of that, you can even do that in May when they graduate. Do something for, you know, congratulate them for their achievement.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, traffic.
I'll wait a second.
Go ahead, I'll be there in a second.
It is.
What you doing there?
Somebody's fighting with me, just shut up.
Being stubborn. Okay, item three, traffic study priorities and discussion of welcome center location. Let's talk about our traffic study priorities, and I think that, no, I think, but I know that the last conversation that we had as far as a priority for one of the, our traffic studies was X of 14. That seems to be kind of a really big pending issue. And of course, it fits into the welcome center relocation and what we're going to do there. So I think that, you know, I think everyone has settled on the, the number third or the third recommendation.
Option.
Option, the option number three, which was, it turns it into a four-way instead of a five-way situation. The other reason why it would be ideal would be for our welcome center. And, you know, we've had some proposal, a proposal on the welcome center going down by the, where the current Amtrak place is. In talking to CDOT some time back, that was a no-go. Wendy Pettit, who is the person from, she pretty much, you talked to her, she kind of rules the roost in that regard. And she right away shut it down. She said it just, just will not work there for obvious reasons. And the other thing is, is that if we're going to have a combination of a multimodal as well as a welcome center, it would not, first of all, as far as a welcome center, a welcome center, the state tourism board, they want an easy, easy off, easy on. Accessibility, plus they want high visibility. And, you know, where it was proposed, it sits too low, and this does not give a good visibility to what they're looking for. to what they're looking for. So what that leaves us at right now is we are in conversation with a couple of owners upon, around the Five Points area to some property there. And what's going to end up happening is that we need, if you're going, if we want to have a multimodal and a welcome center, we need a lot of space. We need a lot of space, not just a small space. Because people are now traveling in big buses, big trailers, they want easy accessibility on and off with these big buses and big trailers. They want other amenities within the facility as well. What's going to happen is that the two properties that we're looking at right now is that the Edvall Texaco and also the Haydad property. We've been in discussion with them to see if they're interested and the conversation is ongoing. One of them is very interested in selling, the other one is waiting to see what the appraisal will come in at. But the conversation will continue and this next Thursday, there's a TPR meeting and our TPR representative from the city of Trinidad as well as COG is Mr. Williamson and he and I are going to be attending that meeting on Thursday pitching this. Had some conversation with CDOT as well as the Tourism Group, we've had some conversation with them, they're very interested in this proposal. Biggest thing is, is that we need, in order to make this work, we need both properties. So like I said, one, Ben, one person is willing to sell, the other person is waiting for the appraisal to see what it brings. There's a lot of steps that we need to take. The biggest issue is, is that in order to be able to get funding, federal funding down the road for any project, a multimodal or welcome center, there are some steps that we have, and I think we gave those to you. There are some particular steps that we have to follow to be, otherwise if we don't follow those steps, when it comes time to actually build a project, we would not be eligible to apply for federal funding. That's just the way, they told us the way it is. So we know that a welcome center is a priority. I know Marty's on listening as well. It's a priority because what we have right now currently does not work. Currently does not work. And a multimodal would also work in the regard of, we could maybe get the council governments because they have a transportation department there where if they were to come in with us on that, and we have talked, not about, they don't know what the project, they know that we're looking for a multimodal project. I have not told her where it's going to be, but after tonight's meeting I can meet with her and tell her what we're looking at. She can take it to their board, maybe they could help us support it, man it, maybe run some of their big buses out of there. So anyway, I think that, I think this is a step in the right direction and I think it's got that high visibility on and off, easy traffic. So I'll open up to questions or concerns.
Not to pressure the second owner, is there a timeframe that he has to reply by? I know he's waiting for an appraisal.
Right. We have to do two things, we have to do a survey.
Survey.
And we have to do an appraisal of the property.
I, I think that's a great idea. Exit 14, for some reason, all the exits coming through town, exit 14 only has three, three avenues or three exits in and out. And that third one is just, it's just not right. So I think we'd be solving a lot of problems by doing that. And another thing I think it would be great for is because we're working with the Greenway Foundation for the Riverwalk and that would be ideal for people out of town to come through that exit, to go right down to the river.
Just to let you know that in talking to Wendy Pettit and Jean from CDOT, when we told them about this possibility, they got really excited that this was a possibility.
I think it's a great idea.
And one of the things that we're going to be proposing on Thursday is to get to amend, I'm not sure if it's going to be the five-year plan or the 10-year plan that they have, I'm not sure. We're going to try, I think, for the five-year plan, am I correct? I think that would be the ideal, because what they do is.
We are, that's what we're, we're trying for, Mayor, and I agree, I did want to just say again, what a monumental undertaking that is and express our appreciation to heat up the willingness to amend that. That is a big, big step. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, it's just a bit awkward on Zoom.
Yeah, but they, I mean, like you said, that is a major step because to amend the plan, because they've already got the plan in place. And to amend the plan is, is a big deal for them, so. There's, there's some hoops we've got to run, you know, go through, but they're not intermanable. I think we can make it work and I just, a matter of that second person coming forward to say yes. Any other questions?
Not the location, I think it's a great driver for downtown and the tie-in to a Riverwalk and then it also addresses a really blighted area of the city that people come in on at exit 14 and face Five Points, which makes no sense and it will, it will be much better.
Well, you know, what's kind of nice about it is that, you know, with the exit 14 plan, that option three, just ways designed, I think would be a huge improvement.
Absolutely.
For accessibility.
Yeah, it hits, it hits all points as far as commercial street and then connecting it to Main Street and Main Street connecting it to Santa Fe Trail. It makes a great loop to get around.
Plus it's, plus it's close to the Amtrak facility.
Right.
And just to let you know, we do have, and we're trying to get some clarifications on that, well, on the warming share that the Amtrak is going to be putting in. They're ready to go, but we have to get some, we're trying to get some answers on that.
They were sent today.
Yeah. We're working on that too, so it's just a hop, skip and a jump from, if this proposal works out, it's close by.
It's close, right? It's real tight.
I have a comment that I wanted to make, Mayor, is I think it's a good example of people working together for the greater good and I think there's so many positive attributes in it and just really, really want to commend everybody that has taken a part in allowing these steps to go forward. I think it's going to be very, very beneficial to Trinidad and to the Trinidad downtown.
So like I said, the big thing is we'll find out Thursday how this thing moves forward, whether it's in the five-year plan or 10-year plan, hopefully we can get in that five-year plan. And then we'll have to, we'll go out and get that, once that's done, if we get that part taken care of, then we will go out and get the survey and the appraisals done for the property and start moving forward. Okay?
Sounds good.
Skirf, do you have anything, Dan? Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. Onto item four, steps to become a tourist town, marketing plan, branding. Mr. Williamson, I'm going to let you lead that one because I know that's something that's been hot on your mind. What are your thoughts?
Um, Mayor, I appreciate that. I genuinely wish I was there, I think that you are all probably grateful I'm not.
I'm missing you.
You know, I will try to keep this brief, but I really do feel that if we can intercept streams of people, and we've talked about so many things that dovetail into this conversation. We talked about the phone system that Trinidad has purchased that gives information. If we can intercept those streams of travelers coming from the south, southeast and east and then, you know, heading up into north into Colorado and various recreation, if we can just divert a small percentage of those to Trinidad will be, will be better off and will be growing. I always speak about mountain bikers and I would say if we could do that study primarily, they do come from the areas I've mentioned because, you know, they're heading to Fruta. If they're on the western slope, they're maybe heading to Fruta or Malab or other places, but primarily we have a bunch of people going mountain biking in Fruta. If we can develop some trails and make it known to those people, we can start gaining market share. But, I mean, we have so much else to offer and I'm not a subject matter on those other things, but this is just a few examples of, of that. You know, we have great fishing locally, river fishing, lake fishing further up, if we can develop that, you know, we might get anglers and there's agencies already in place that would help us with that. This is way, way out there, but I want to mention it because it's a part of big picture thinking that I think we need to do. Capital if the rail gets back to the mine, it will be an actual railroad line, there'd be the possibility, I would underscore the word possibility, that on days of not running and culturing, you could potentially run a tourist train up there. We could capitalize on people that are interested in mining history, trains and, you know, make people come to Trinidad for that sort of thing or encourage people to come to Trinidad for that thing. I have a lot more to say on that, I will expound to be brief, or hopefully brief. The other part is we have great architecture. There is a house on Willow and Colorado that was designed by a renowned architect. I don't remember the name, but several times I've seen Greyhound buses stop there and people disembark and go tour the home. That was the previous owner, I don't know if the current owner is still doing that. So that architecture, architect has a fan base that follows them around or their houses sees that. This is my sort of visualization. So I'm sorry. I think Trinidad has so many gems in it that you can, like, you would visualize each thing that we do as a little tiny expensive appetizer, if you will, like at a super high-end restaurant. Like mountain biking might be a pedophile, sorry. Train, mining may be a little, you know, other type of cookie. We have all of these special treats laying all over the kitchen. What we need is one person to come in, make them artfully arranged on a plate, take pictures, get it out there, obviously I'm speaking metaphor, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense, and get it out there for people to come and say, listen, these are all of the activities that Trinidad has to offer. And then we need to get billboards out to intercept traffic, really market ourselves online, have, and then in doing so, we need to ensure that we brushed up and made sure that we're able to have support where we stay. If we tell mountain bikers to come to Trinidad, we need to ensure we have some world-class mountain bike trails for them to do, and I think we're heading in the right direction. We need to find a captain to stand behind and give the direction and ensure that we're going in a unified direction to, to bring more tourists to Trinidad and sure they have a great time and are able to come back. Mayor, thank you for indulging me on that. I'll be done talking unless anyone has some questions directly toward me.
You know, I think what you're talking about, and this is where some of our current boards and commissions could come together and begin good, solid discussions. We're talking with the Tourism Group, we're talking the Outdoor Recreation Group, Parks and Rec, and even our Historical Preservation Board. I think they can come out and of course.
Can I have a comment?
Okay. And I mean even the Chamber of Commerce can come and sit at the table and begin a good conversation as to what does a destination point look like? I keep using this metaphor as well, where do we want to be when we grow up? So I think that, I think that would be a good, probably to begin a discussion with at least four groups or some individuals from each group to begin a good conversation. I'll open up discussion.
I was approached by some local people here in Trinidad, definitely have a older, mature clientele here in town, there's, like, a gas. With the older and mature, mature clientele, I was approached to maybe talk about making this town a, in addition to a tourist town, a retirement town, where people come from around the world and in their golden years want to.
Don't look at me when I'm saying.
Want to sit down and relax and maybe partake in pickleball and maybe a little marijuana while they're, you know, getting older. So with that, with that being said, you're going to need like asset, I mean amenities, I'm not looking at you, amenities and like healthcare for, for older people, mature people.
And a memory care facility.
Yes.
And adult daycare, huge needs here.
Just adults stuff for older, older people to make them more comfortable when they come here and spend their, their golden years here in town.
May I have a question?
Can I talk?
Sure, please, come forward.
I'm Mayor Council, thank you, I'm Elizabeth Kelly and I'm actually here, I think, wearing two hats as the conversation has progressed and primarily as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. So absolutely, so many amazing ideas being tossed around. I don't come to many meetings and I do listen to some online, but a lot of work being done, so thank you all for that. And I think if we're, we just wanted to have a little bit of input on this branding discussion. So when we talk about branding, are we talking about, you know, just appealing to the tourist sort of community and/or new residents? I came here four years ago and I came because of the architecture, I came because of the history and the legacy and the generations of families that have lived here and all of their stories and that has meant so much to me. So I think when we talk about trying to integrate that into any kind of planning, that that's super, super important. And there is a way to meet and greet, and I love this idea of students and folks who've lived here and people, I don't, I wish we had another name for newcomer, but, you know, residents who've only been here for.
Call them new residents.
New residents.
I guess, you know, I don't know what it would be, but, I mean, not that newcomer is a bad word, I just, but, so that's, you know, is there, and I don't know where you are in the process, is there a focus group? Because there's all these ideas that need to be distilled down and I think about the point about there being some sort of, you know, person or entity that's responsible for keeping track of all of these, this stuff, all these great ideas so that they actually are manifest would be a wonderful thing. You know, we did our little fledgling community event this summer, the Echoes of History event at the Chappelle House and we really wanted to try to get some of the other boards and commissions and folks together and we had a little success, but it was our first time and we could do, you know, better next time. So I think there are some entities and processes already in place that we just need to kind of connect with. of connect with. And I hadn't planned on, I will mention, so I'm not speaking on behalf in my, I'm the long-term care ombudsman for our region, so I live at all of our nursing homes and advocate on behalf of us both, and I'm speaking on behalf of the council governments by any means. But I've worked in aging and disability for a long, long time, and I don't, I really want us to embrace our aging community, embrace the fact that we need a place for people to live. You know, I've known in the last couple months, several people, they're gone, they had to move away.
Right.
Because we don't have an independent living facility, quote unquote. We don't have options for them, so they have to leave the community. And they bring money here, they have, you know, steady sources of income, some more than others, but certainly they're worthwhile members of our community. So I just really want to celebrate that and not sort of see the older adults as a drag on our community, because they have a lot to offer.
You know, there was, the company that owns the nursing home period, they wanted to relocate, actually not relocate, but they wanted to build a new facility. The problem was, is trying to find an area large enough, because they really had a good proposal of what they wanted to do, and it might have been some assisted living type facility where the elderly people could go into, because you're right. I mean, the baby boomers, we're aging, we're aging out quickly.
Yes.
But, you know, and they're gonna, I've been saying this for the last 15 years, there comes a time when all the baby boomers, we're going to be needing...
Don't look at me.
I'm looking at you.
(laughing)
Well, you know, we, several of us are going to be needing those type of facilities.
You know, it's really interesting that you bring that up. We're talking about a retirement, this being a retirement community, because I was talking to Ms. Fletcher, who was on city council, and she said, I want to stay in Trinidad, but there's no housing here for older people where I could have somebody do my yard work. It's like, yeah, it's something we need to really talk...
And there is, and there is one company that wants to do like 93 units, and it's going to be kind of a, I'm not sure if it's going to be a gated type of community, where they'll do exactly that, where they will build, and whoever lives there will take care of the inside, they will take care of the outside, and I think that's what you're talking about, and we do need that type of stuff.
Well, you know, they just built or finished building, rehabbing the cheese factory in La Vida, and it's the La Vida Village now, and it's 20, I mean, 26 beds, assisted living. So it's, and it's a mix, there are about five of them are Medicaid, which long-term care is very expensive, so even if you are of middle income or even have money, means that money is spent down very quickly.
Yeah.
So, you know, it has some private and public funding, but something like that would be, and we have, we do have one assisted living in town, but we could use, that whole continuum could be improved.
Longer that people can stay in their homes or something like that is ideal, because I just, in the last couple of weeks, my wife and I, we talked to a couple of people that have moved into, well, they put them into a nursing facility. One of them costs $8,000 a month, and one costs, I think it was $10,000 a month.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, that money...
And the workforce issues are substantial as well, we just don't have folks even, you know, facilities, but that's another issue.
Quite expensive. And you're talking about the branding, that portion of this. I know that we went through a branding process right when I became mayor, and that was six years ago, and they did a branding there, and I think Marty's on board with us tonight. Marty, where are we at? Are we still thinking about the rebranding?
The rebranding of what, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Well, there's been talk in the tourism board about rebranding the community, I don't know, I know that was a discussion that came up one time.
No, there's no active conversation about rebranding.
Okay.
That I'm aware of, unless you spoke to some of the tourism board members individually, we haven't talked about rebranding. We talked about mostly selecting a focus, not rebranding so much. Do we want to focus our marketing and advertising in the direction of outdoor recreation, or do we want to focus on our history and our culture? What, what direction do we want to move in? But it's not, not necessarily a rebranding, it's more of a refocus on how we want to put those assets that the town has on a plate, as Mr. Boylson talked about, you know, it's putting everything together, or what do we need to focus on? But it's not a rebranding.
Well, I think, you know, going back to what we're talking about is trying to make this area a destination, community or area, and like I said, it does involve, you know, the parks or the recreation department, the outdoor rec, historical preservation, and so what's going to end up happening is, we need to have those groups come together so that tourism can become a marketing program for the entire process.
I think, I think it's really important to bring all that input in, that's important data, and all of what Ms. Kelly is saying, and what everybody's saying is important, but I think this is a thing that, I'm not usually a big, I'm a bring in a consultant kind of person, because I think a lot of times we can do things, this I don't think we can do. You've got to have somebody who doesn't have a dog in the fight about what the message is going to be to hear all this and to create that platter metaphorically, and then to come up with a consistent way to communicate that to the world. We have so much to offer, and I feel like kind of we run around going, oh, outdoor recreation, artistic culture, history, I mean, there's just so much. We need to have one unifying concept of why people should come here, not only as tourists, but to live here. Now, my, my perspective in all of this is that tourists are great, I want to be prepared for them, but I want people who come here like I did and went, what the heck is this community? I want to be part of it and get involved in it. So, so I think that's what you do, is you present yourself so professionally and so together that people go, I can make a life there.
What is our, what is our current branding right now? What is our current perception of...
We don't, I don't think we have one.
I wanted to, I wanted to mention, if I, if I may, and thank you. I think Councilwoman Ogletree brings up a super, super valid point. I mean, when we have discussions like this, it's so easy to get mired down in detail, like, you know, I feel like we're gonna have a discussion on branding, and that, that's great, it's useful, it's important, but I don't think it helps to get us to where we actually need to be going, in my opinion, and I've been wrong before, but in my opinion, branding is almost arbitrary. It just, it just means we get people's attention, we get them here, like we get, say Trinidad, gateway to Colorado, higher than Denver. That would get people's attention. It doesn't matter. So this is what I think. If this is a private industry, we would, as a team, we would say, this is the goal of where we need to get to. And we would say, this is where we currently are, and then we would make waypoints, and by waypoint, that means specifically verifiable goals, that we would take action towards meeting. Step one, step two, step three, steps A, B, and C have to happen concurrently, but they're on a different timeline. And then after you meet those goals, you have arrived at the destination that you want to arrive. I think Erin, very eloquently, made a very clear point that it's something that we should consider hiring a professional. I hope we can really give that some consideration. I mean, you know, let's say a company charged us $100,000 to do a consultation. Does anyone know, I'm sure someone in council knows, if we can bring a tourist into town for the weekend, how much money would that make us? So you hire the consultation, you bring in tourists, man, that will pay back dividends. That's all I had to say.
Well, you know, I think that could be something that we can look at, and look at, if there is a consultant out there that is available.
Marty has her.
Marty?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council is that they are currently discussing using their outside contract services line item to bring in a consultant to do that very thing, to discuss, you know, how we want to market the area, and that is actually in discussion. So I would invite anybody who has something to say on this to the next work session that the tourism board has, which is the second Wednesday of August. So they are looking at a consultant right now that they think would be professionally and a, that could do exactly what you're trying to, trying to accomplish here, is trying to find what it is we have to offer, how to advertise ourselves, how to market the city, what we want to do in the future. So it's already on the table, so it's, it's in discussion. So now is the time to gather with the tourism board, invite the Main Street board, invite others to the table to discuss this, so that we are all on the same page. I think it's great that we have all these ideas, but if we don't collaborate within ourselves to find out, you know, and agree what we, what we want, we're not going to make any headway. We need to talk within our, within our own community and find out exactly what it is we want. And I think we have the funding with, in the line item, in the tourism budget to do that very same thing.
Ms. Eric, would you maybe put a memo out or an invite out, a hot invite out, to the groups to be at that work session?
Sure.
And that would be, of course, the tourism would be there, the outdoor rec, historic preservation, Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, they can all be there.
Arts and Culture.
Arts and Culture as well.
May I, may I interject something, Mayor?
Sure.
I think that's a great approach to it. For any, the tourism board that's already heading down that road, I think that's really great, but I think it's important that we don't just select from one entity, I think an RFP needs to be put out.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
That was the policy we have to follow, Mr. Erickson.
Right, but, I mean, that way, if we can have a cohesive front on it, and I think that should be directed through city staff, and I genuinely appreciate everyone's effort in it. It is all of our goal to help Trinidad, and we're all here spending, you know, how many hours after five o'clock working towards that, so I appreciate each and every person that's on the line tonight. Yeah, thank you.
Just, just so you're aware, Mr. Williamson, I am city staff, I am the tourism manager, I am the president of the chair.
No, I, I definitely know that, but, I mean, you know, there's so many other people that are involved too, so I didn't want to leave anyone out. I definitely know you're city staff, Marty, thank you.
Okay.
There was another gentleman that's on, and I think he raised his hands, did he have...
Chris, whoever.
Yeah, hi there, everybody, I'm Chris Thomas, I live part-time in Trinidad and actually work for a marketing and branding agency, and we work exactly with townships like Oldtown, Lafayette, downtown Superior, et cetera. I'm not pitching my agency right now, we're really just listening in and trying to add a little bit of value for the process, and what's been discussed is definitely what's needed, put together an RFP, start interviewing different agencies, find out who's the best fit. But really, for the town, you could talk about some great things, I'm sorry I popped in late, but like, yes, our aging population needs a place to be. Our outdoor tourism is on the crux of exploding down there. Now's the time to jump on that. So my guess is, like, the tourism office there, all the different committees will have, you know, some great input. Have a, have a clear goal in mind for what you'd like, and, and be able to say in your RFP, be very clear about what the ask is, and be very clear about what your budget is. And then that way, you'll be able to weed out those that are too big, too small, et cetera, from an agency standpoint, and people that are in my business will know exactly what you need, and they'll be able to come forth with ideas, with thought starters, and different ways to help promote the town. So I'm excited about what you all are talking about, I think now is the time to jump on this. Don't wait on it. That's, that's probably the worst thing that could happen, because there's other townships. I was just in La Vida, you guys are doing a pretty good job up there, so let's, let's grab people to come to Trinidad, because we know how amazing this town is.
Chris, what's your last name again?
My name is Chris Thomas. I'm just gonna, I tell you what, literally, I'm, I'm just gonna put in my, my marketing firm's thing in the chat here, just take a look, because we're just one agency, but at least you can see what we do, and then you could start comparing with others.
Marty, Marty, why don't you go ahead and get his information, and then we will have it.
Yes, sir.
I, I really think it needs to be directed from, like, the city manager level, is my perspective on that, Mayor.
Take a look. Yes.
Hi, you know, I'm...
Come forward.
Sorry, didn't need to speak tonight, guys. Thank you all for all that you do every single day. What has occurred to me by sitting in the audience is that maybe not all of you know what's been going on with tourism and the marketing agencies that we have used over the years and currently still have some dabbles in contracts with success and stuff, and I think that we need to probably get a whole package together, Marty, for everybody in one, so that you can see year-to-date, all this stuff and all the outdoor recreation, and all the reasons why people are coming here currently is because of what tourism has been doing, and how we move forward, and I've always sought thoughts since the, since the hospital just had a $32 million renovation program for our beautiful hospital, that too could be used to bring seniors here, because we all know that we don't want to live in a place where we don't have good healthcare as we age. So I welcome Marty and all the ads and articles and all the great things and all the awards that we have gotten in tourism in the last year to go ahead and present you guys a package, so we, so that everybody's brought up to date in one package of what's been going on.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
County Mayor, Councilon staff, you guys know him at a few meetings. I was, I was, I filmed the last time they did this, and the tourism board has done a really good job, and this is their job to do this. But after this was all said and done, the biggest problem, and this is the problem that we have a lot in the community, is that people don't pay attention to what's going on in the meetings. I mean, Audrey invited the board chairs to come to this meeting tonight, and they're not here. So what happened, and I think, I still have this on tape, I filmed it all, it was all right here, when they asked people to come in from the community and participate, you know, and then after it was all said and done, some people were like, well, what's this? That's dumb, you know, we don't like that. Well, they didn't participate. At least now you guys have an interest, you know, and say, we need to do this collaboratively. It is the job, though, I think, of the tourism board, that's what they're designated for, and they have the money to do it. But if you're gonna do this, you really got to try to light a fire under some people to show up and have input. I mean, I've been a part of the tourism board for, since 2010, 2009, 2010, filming and doing stuff, and, you know, now that the peak is the feature, I mean, I was talking about that 2010, we should have the peak in one proposal that we did. What they went with some architecture, it was great, but now it's changed. So it's only been four or five years, but it's time for a change, but...
Yes.
But, but, you gotta try to get more people involved, because after it's all said and done, they'll be like, well, that doesn't work, you know, why'd they do it like that? You know, you didn't show up. So, so if you're gonna do this, you gotta light a fire under some people, and none of them showed up.
Audrey, the last, were you involved with the last boards and commission chairs?
We held a meeting Friday afternoon with the board chairs. There wasn't anyone present from Main Street, and I think, who else? Were we missing? Gosh, I want to say that was it.
Just venturing in a little bit here, where are we at with the hiring of a director from then Main Street? Any luck there so far in town?
There were a couple of interviews then, I don't know where they are after those interviews.
I was just wondering if that was...
But the board chair meeting was actually a really great... But the board chair meeting was actually a really great meeting. I'm surprised that we didn't have people here. I know Tom Kress was there from tourism, but he wasn't, and he said immediately he wasn't going to be able to make this meeting. Because those board chairs all have really good, solid ideas and they feel the same way that Councilwoman Ogletree said, that, you know, we don't really have that solid platform. And I think it's something everybody desires so that they know really what they should be doing too. For instance, the arts and culture, they want to make sure whatever art they're placing fits as well. And so I think, I think we can get that buy-in with them, maybe even if somehow if they can't necessarily make it to the tourism board meetings, maybe if even a staff liaison or whomever goes out to those boards and just gets, gathers that information. But the communication was a really good one on Friday.
Good.
Really good.
Yes.
Just sorry, just one more thing, guys, and thank you so much for the audio because that's really great to hear. And I think part of what Tom was saying and part of what Marty was saying and the frustration is that Marty worked really hard about a month ago to gather all those groups together with tourism so that we could have exactly what you guys are doing tonight. And we had like one or two people showed up and literally she, she had reached out to dozens of people. And so that was a frustration on our part because we were doing exactly what you guys are saying, trying to come to that surface for next year's focus on how we could divvy up the money to figure out the best that we can all be, you know.
I think maybe, I think one thing that we need to do is send these people that don't show. I think we just call them up and ask them, you know, were you asked to come? Could you please give us a good reason why you didn't show? I think they need to give us some, give them an answer, like Marty, she needs an answer for these no-shows.
And it's difficult. They're volunteers.
Yeah, that's true.
And so it's difficult.
It is.
Is, is Chris going on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm still here.
I have a question real quick. We were talking about branding earlier and what is your idea about? Is that a good idea or a bad idea for getting the branding for the, for the city of Trinidad?
Well, so honestly, I have to say, I, we need to look at what your current brand is. Like, is it actually honest and true to the city now and what you offer and what you stand for? So if that's true, then we would want to take a look at that. Is there anything that needs to be evolved? And work through that conversation. But that also includes stakeholders, right? Like internal stakeholders like you're talking about. As well as if there's specific members within the, the city that, or I, I should say, people that live within or the city that you feel like really want to be engaged and they really want to be heard. That can be a two-way street. You've got to be able to temper that a little bit because obviously too many voices, nothing ever gets done. So you have to have a team that's going to lead this and shepherd it through. And a good branding agency should be there to help you with that. And they should also be there to help get buy-in if that's what you want. You know, if you want to be able to present and roll out this big new branding campaign that's people are frankly spending money on, you need to have an agency that's there for you that's ready to, to, to go to those meetings, to go to those, you know, those community people and say, look, this is what we're doing. We want to get you on board. We want to be, we want you to be excited about it. We need to get your buy-in from the beginning and hear their, hear their, their opinions and their thoughts. And, and, and then you present it to the, the people within the city and you say, and you get buy-in. Now, you're never going to get a hundred percent, obviously, but at least that way, people are feeling like they're heard. Now, you also have to say, okay, that's great, but the marketing firms do this day in and day out. That's what we're paid for. We have great success with our, with our townships that we work with. But it is because it's a collaborative effort. So I guess my, my, getting back to your question, I want to see what the current brand is. Does it resonate? What needs to be tweaked? And how do we move forward with Trinidad as such a vibrant city that has so much to offer for so many different people? And then you start to think about, well, okay, we've got that part, but then how do you get people to listen? Or, you know, even know that that's the message, right? So that's where then you start to work on the marketing portion of it. Start, start with the foundational stuff. Start with the brand. Make sure the messaging is right. Make sure the tone is right and then figure out, well, do we roll it out to the digital? What's our tourism campaign? All that fun stuff, local and, and regional.
Okay, let's go ahead and go on to our next item. Just check with council if there are any future discussion items that you guys would like to have. Mr. DeBonne, anything on your agenda here?
Well, maybe some progress on the Greenway Foundation possibly. And maybe some updates on Fisher's Peak Trail access points.
I think the Fisher's Peak Trail access point's the only one right now is actually living, that's it.
So maybe just the Greenway.
We started talking about changing the cultivation fees. Is that an ongoing discussion or?
That'll probably be Pierce Shorty, don't you agree, Audrey?
Yes.
Okay, so it's on, it's on the table. Another thing I remembered, we did a priority list of capital improvement projects. I wonder if we should go through that and retweak that because Mr. Chatterley talked, we've talked about the enclosed swimming pool. We have since found out that you can't enclose the one we have. We're going to have to buy land, put another swimming pool and enclose that. So I'm thinking if we go back and reassess if those priorities are still viable or should we just take it off and not worry about it for the time being?
One of the things that Audrey and I were talking about is we probably need to have another retreat and probably sometime in October, give our new city manager some time to kind of get his feet wet. And then we'll sit down and begin to strategize again, but get a little more detailed. I think that's what we need to do. And I think that's, we've had that discussion just what we can say.
And we've had internal discussions even before Mike left about, we know the community really wants that covered swimming pool. But at the same time, we know we need to fix the grandstands. We have to weigh expenses. We have to weigh use. We also have to weigh ongoing costs. And so really and truly, I think we've got to tackle the grandstands first and then we can move on to.
That was actually Frank's, Frank's recommendation that we reallocate that money over to the grandstands.
Yeah, but I think we need to revisit.
Oh, yeah. I think that.
No, I, then what we said, just we, we got enough covered tonight that we could work on for a month.
Years. I like both those ideas and, and yes, I don't have anything else this evening.
I gave everybody in council the old Parks and Recreation Advisory Board master plan. I think Jen Green is going to be coming up. Well, she's supposed to be here tonight or maybe not. She was invited just to get a new master plan done, so that's all that.
Who's the chair for Parks and Recreation?
Jen Green. Mr. Edimson, do you have anything in particular you'd like to have in a future discussion?
I really agree with what Frank said. We have a month of Sundays worth of work ahead of us. I have, I have nothing at this point to do upcoming meetings this week, the, our report on it. Next week, City Council. Thank you, Mayor.
The only thing I was going to ask Audrey is that, you know, we've talked about the weed problems that we have in town and they're horrendous. And I, I think that if you could talk to maybe code enforcement and instead of, you know, in their truck, they start on one street and just walk down, that, that, maybe we can, we need to find out. Because it looks like what's happening is some people are cutting their weeds up to the sidewalk and they're not cutting that out to the street side. So I'm not sure whose responsibility that is. Is that the homeowner? Is that the?
It's the property owner.
So I think that maybe we write, have, bring something up and put it on these people's doors and say, your responsibility is to cut the weeds all the way out to the street side.
Have you seen about the apartment complex?
Yes, yes. But anyway, I think it would be good if they would just get off their truck and start walking and check some of these.
I know they, they've been working hard at it. And they attempt to give people a chance to get them cut, follow up. A couple of the, the locations right on Main Street were followed up on immediately, which was nice because they were out of control. But I've also talked to our fire department and they're testing fire hydrants right now. And so those crews have been asked that if they're in those neighborhoods, they approach houses and ask them, you know, give them the fire speech and ask them to cut their, their weeds.
There's one issue over on, I mean, we, we talked about it because they just redone it. But on, and I'm not sure who's responsible for it because it's kind of in a close area. On Nevada and where the college is, we just put that ramp in there. There's so many weeds there, you can't even see the, you can't even walk there. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's all brand new. It's on Broome Street where Nevada and Broome. I don't, I mean, I don't know if that's our property. You know, it's kind of a in-between there. But if, it's right on the corner there in Broome, across from the college building. We just put that in there with that, hand railing and everything. And the weeds are so high, you can't even see over the top of it.
I'm going to have to go by there.
Yeah, check a look at it because it's, and I mean, it may not, it may be our property or it might be the owner's property. It's kind of.
Is it right there by the Yoddermont thing?
Yeah, right across, yeah. I mean, I just noticed that because I go up there every day.
Well, actually, I, that's what I said. I, I questioned, you know, whose responsibility is it all the way out to the street?
Yeah, it's kind of tough.
So if, if it's the owner's responsibility to clean weeds all the way out to the street side, yeah, just a simple note to say you're responsible to clean all the way out to the street. You don't have to give them a, you know, a citation or anything like, just a recommendation. Okay. Thank you guys for, the audience for attending and anyone that's listening and thank you. And thank council for another long evening.